But. I mean, I'm serious. And let's get the first stands on nation. Indivisible.
Welcome, everybody. Uh, we have a forum. I will take a motion to approve the agenda in the minutes. I have a motion in a second is any respect on it? All of the favors say aye. Opposed motion carries. Uh, Rich.
Morning.
Morning.
Um. Contact here is probably gonna finish the surface board today. Saving. I don't have enough data. I want to start the other stuff yet. Free time. We now be short enough since we're just kinda continuing on what we're doing in this local line. I like to probably I'd rather let you guys know a couple weeks that we kind of. Quoted out some maintenance work for some stuff that we need a long stick. So Elliot. Is getting some of our work. We got a covert. On the airport blacktop to the north. That's really it's like a ten foot over. We gotta replace so. There'll be some expense and getting a new color put in there, but. If they then that. A little that bridge work is to the to the west of town here at one oh five that. All that stuff about going on and we're using the long stick. Uh, just to keep you up even a minute. You know where the thing is is um. On the agenda, we've got. We are. Kimberly looking on. Trying to find it for vehicles. I think RC's trucks probably do. I'll mention that one. I've got a hundred ninety three online, so I'm looking to update too. We'll just see. I don't know. I know what the sheriff stuff. And anybody else. It's already gets them ordered and getting it within a. Timeframe. So I gotta look into find out, you know, phone the dealerships down there and. If they've got anything on the lot that's reasonable through maybe we went by off the lot just to get something. We'll see how that goes. So. The other thing we have on here is the discussion of like on the contract with Ruggnus Brothers that was for those. Box cover projects, uh, finally got the contracts back. Um, it does have like the consultant put. Me as signing the contracts. If you guys do a payment that I can sign the contract, but I want your approval to. Approve the time for Ruggnus Brothers in the amount of five hundred eighty four thousand four hundred eighty eight dollars and twenty cents. As for two precast box, oh, it's in the locations that we've been about for.
You got done this year?
That's the goal.
That or the precast company will get.
I haven't talked to him yet because we don't have a. That's the goal. And the nice thing about the precast is we can go late into the season. And they're on gravel roads that. Not too high volume.
Perfect.
That, uh, and they go in in pretty quick. I know the last time we did a box cover, it took. Less than two weeks from start to finish the whole and with it dry as it's been, it might.
Go pretty quick.
They drive in on fight water. Yep. And you're right. I don't know what the precasters are doing, but.
I need a motion then to. Approve the contract. For Ruggnus Brothers on Kansas twenty six and Lincoln forty two. I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. Opposed motion carries.
That's all I've got. Yes, you guys got a question for me? Any question for Rick?
I think so.
Okay. No, thank you, Rick. Sorry. Um, drainage. I didn't see any claims. Uh. Open ditch repairs DD two. Ready first pay request. You need a. You need a motion to approve that first pay request.
Well, the makers of that.
Yep, they sent us.
Yeah, I'm looking to prove the uh, pay request number one for you too. I have a motion in a second to approve that. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. I opposed motion carries.
I do.
Then we got drainage policy and you guys got that email for you. Do you see any problems with that? I think it looks pretty good.
There's three copies of that. You gotta sign on the lower. Like the next page though. Or right, right?
Got to think a little bit. They move around.
It's the one day again.
Yeah.
There's three of them.
Oh.
That would just take the paper book on. One for the contractor, one for the engineer, one for us. They'll get really good at it.
Now back to this.
Yeah, look good.
These guidelines. It looked good to me. Yeah, I didn't see any.
Pretty straightforward. I think they should do a little.
It's maybe make the process a little smoother.
Just figured if Colton has that and we have that and we can give it to um, Val and send it out to all the contractors so they know. So.
And put it online.
Yeah. Yeah, then we'll have guidelines.
Motion to adopt a new drainage policy. I'll make a motion.
I'll say to that motion. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I opposed motion carries.
Forgot I mentioned anybody that did. Put them off relative to other individuals on Friday.
Oh, good.
Do more than it accepted.
I'll get you back.
Guess me. I got one more to do, I think. Depending on. I'm getting pretty close. I'm in fact, one of them. Is out of county, but he's within five miles of one shot.
Do that one.
So. It's awful. Well, anyway, I just want I forgot the mission. I will give you the names and big roll stuff.
Good, good. Good enough. Uh, I'll take a motion to approve the claims if you go to the river. Second, I got a motion in a second to prove the claims and further discussion on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I propose motion carries. Do you have any reports?
No, I didn't.
Payroll eligibility or salary changes?
And no.
Liquor license? We do have a fireworks permit for country view acres of a joyous.
Two of them.
Two of them.
Yeah, I got another one too.
Well, getting standard without we had that.
I don't know. At least they're flying. Sometimes I don't.
Oh, both in the same place.
Somebody, someone or someone even thought that there was a thirty five dollar charter fee. I know. I guess I should start.
Must have read that online somewhere. Maybe I. I make a motion to approve the fireworks permits.
I'll say in it. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I opposed motion carries.
One please begin. Coming up.
September, uh, Dave the ninth and August twenty fifth.
Family wedding. Your daughter.
Oh, okay.
The wild event.
Uh, destruction claims and warrants up to FY eighteen. Is there a motion to? Destroy those?
Having rhythm?
Yeah, we're safety.
Yeah.
That I'm looking at instruction playing the words up eighteen.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Destroy those claims and warrants up to FY eighteen. Any further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose that motion carries. Then we had a few questions about. The legal firm and those got answered in an email. So the.
But I did notice that the fifty five hours didn't came.
Yes.
I just hadn't picked that up.
Instead of raising the bill, they just lower the hours. That's what I picked up.
Yeah, so I guess it's up to you guys.
Well, well, that's. Safety, so.
Well, and is there any? Okay, there you can terminate if if. He's not like Jim.
That's the all that's worth our dollars and money.
Yeah, we're doing the legal ones.
Sorry.
Where we were concerned about the fact that we would get charged and he said in that email that we unless there was a question. Or we got them involved. There was no, we would never get a bill.
Right.
And that's what we talked about.
That's what you guys talked about and that was our concern. So. Is there a motion to approve? Reengagement letter with them.
Almost miss the followers and sending engagement letter.
I'm looking second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on that? Now, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
I oppose that. Motion carries.
Now we're going to see.
Now we'll. Get one here.
Yeah.
That one. And now we'll go on to the safety solutions and there. He did change the contract. He moved it a little. Father north to Bremmer County. And then he's, then it got stated in there. Depending on whoever loses the case. They end up paying the other. First, the other entities. Lawyer bill. So we kind of got what we wanted there. But you're right, Jackie. They did not change the fifty five hours. So.
And there I do.
For the sixty hours.
And I do see there's termination in there that we just have to. You know, thirty days written notice. So if it's not the same as what we have now, there is a way to get out of it.
Right. I'm gonna make a motion to. Say. Consulting agreement.
I'll support that motion. I have a motion and a second. On the safety solutions. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I opposed motion carries. Um, next, the water system improvement project. Authorized V N K to submit construction permit applications. The Iowa Department of Natural Resources. Or you need a motion. To.
You want to talk about it? I was here a couple weeks ago and nothing changed. Um. Three components, one being the water main outside tower, two being the wall pumps. Three being the water tower. Um, we're moving along though. I think code is something else and cleaning this is like. Plan is to bid a project for the water main. About a bay on the. Topper. Lots there. Take quotes for the pump replacement because we blow the crack hole there. And then I'm gonna call the water tower maintenance if you're real. If you're contacted to authorize central hang to receive up to type that work there. We got another water tower work for you. They actually have availability this week and next week. I kind of wanted to bring that up this morning. They called me Friday, late Friday and said, we're in the area. If you want to get go on the logo.
Okay.
And so it's temperature sensitive as far as the coatings go, but.
Okay.
So, yeah, so I'd like. Authorization to submit the construction permit application. I've sent the fee calculations for cheap to Jackie. You're a check. We're sending that in, but we can go ahead and submit the plans and then the check can follow. Um, the previous decision to allow the construction permanent application. We have contract that. Water, our coating actually came in less than what you guys were anticipating anyway, right? So we're at forty five thousand. Um, washing the exterior is seventeen thousand five hundred. Removal of the logo. They paint over it and then paint the entire side wall of the shell all the way around. Cause they'll not get it perfect. So it's gonna look like a band and just kind of a different color. That was. Ten thousand dollars. And then the interior wash down inspection, disinfection, everything on seventeen five. So we're at forty five thousand, but then any touch up coatings after the polo locking at the main spot there. We that's. No way of. But not really doing it to.
Right.
So do you want two motions? One to prove that's. That initial uh. Improvement project itself and then another one to prove the. Not just authorization to touch it up.
And that technically isn't on the agenda, but I guess it falls under the project.
Yeah.
So.
So the D and R for.
Let's do the.
I make a motion to authorize V N K to submit construction. Applications to the. And so I'm the D and R.
I second that. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose that. Motion carries. Now we'll do a motion on the touch up.
And who's the company?
Central hang code.
They've been to the work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a motion to approve simple take bonus to do our water tower touchups.
I'm motioning second. There is any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I opposed. Motion carries. All right, so. Right down here. I like these.
I make it easy for you.
Was there just one?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, we got a check.
Okay, Jack.
Uh. Next, we have a discussion on water and sewer rates and there you're up again.
Nothing. Did I just leave that on or?
I asked.
Oh, you guys haven't.
Oh, yeah.
Back together.
So. No, I got information.
Okay.
So. I guess just to be clear, AJ and I were going back and forth a little bit yesterday on them. We have not done a lot of rate study out there. We talked about doing it at one time. Um, we we put together a budget number for you and then it was part of people's other contracts. So I left them.
Yeah.
Uh, by a friend of mine, so I started diving into this and I told AJ to kind of get this thing resolved, wrap it up, make it go away. I put half a yesterday in the office trying to get this resolved for you and it's gonna take more work than I thought. At all. Um, this. The deeper I go into it, honestly, the more frustrated I got. So this is just a quick overview of the last three years. You're probably going to see me something like this. I guess simplified it. Water. Doing good. You're. Profit every year wastewater. Twenty twenty one, you had a profit of twenty percent. Twenty one, twenty two, you started to lose money. Twenty two, twenty three, you lost more money. Figure out. So. I have several questions. What has changed? I know they're ready to go. Going through some of the other. Um, claims that have provided me. I know. Other like as well, is it gonna be a recurring? Item. It wasn't a one year. So. We need a capital improvement plan. We need to start looking at other projects out there. You know, waste water plan isn't that old, but the pumps. They're gonna send a letter.
With malfunction itself all the time.
Yeah, so. It was part of their value added service, people service that they're gonna put together a list of items that they see need to be. Um, upgraded. And I think we need to prep on it a little bit to get that lift. And we can play play holders in this budget. I mean. Right now on weight bar, if I were to look at twenty three, twenty three, I'd be saying they need about forty percent increase. If you're going to explain it off.
Mm hmm.
The rate. Um. One of the other. Bigger. Bad. Is. Do you know if this rate still or this ordinance still current? Do you know in fifteen?
That would be as current as it gets.
I don't even need to be a follower. I was trying to back into their numbers yesterday. I need to figure out how they're doing their math and figure out what they're. I don't think it's a lot different.
Right.
But I think they've. Taken some liberties of updating some of the percentages.
And I think there's been turnover in whoever's turning in the spreadsheets to me and stuff. So, I mean, I can send you the spreadsheets and we can dig into it if you want.
Of how much everybody paid.
Yeah.
So they do provide that to you?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's a good start.
Yeah, just tell me how many you want.
Last three years. But then I would like to schedule a meeting with people service again. Probably have AJ involved and be there all the believe others. And sit down and. Basically give them a day and expectation here that what we're expecting out of them and the list and ah. I mean, if you want, I'll finish the rate study. I do it just. I don't agree. I've given you a budget number before. If they do some, we do some, we can do it to less. That budget number is divided. But if it was okay with you, I would finish this pretty good. Um. One of the other big items out there is holiday and.
Hmm.
At what point? Is that gonna be forged that they don't rate there?
Yeah, under new or no?
You, I mean, the code said you can't. The ordinance said you can worship. The state code says you can afford that. They should be. Connecting.
You all, all closely concerned there?
Cause I thought when it was done, they were supposed to happen. I I was supposed to be the.
Iowa administrative school says one eight.
Mm hmm.
Treatment. Facility becomes available within two hundred feet. Any building served by private sewage. Should be connected with the public system within a timeframe. Or under conditions that by they have authority. The administrative authority here is to find and the local water health. So.
And it's been long enough and they fight it that we want them to do it now.
Grindfather name.
They they can fight it. But you. Would still be able to start charging them at least a base rate.
Yeah.
It just whether or not. You're ready to go through it and force the issue on them or if you want to meet with them, but it's gonna make a change on. It's gonna make a difference on the percentage of total system usage.
That changes the waste water percentage for everybody.
Every.
They're gonna use whatever percent of water they're using. Now you'll take that percentage of wastewater too.
Correct.
So you kind of need to deal with that first.
So, yeah, we need to decide if we're gonna deal with that first. And include that.
Let's see. Needs to be.
Old there, could they?
No.
I don't have.
Before I got here.
Yeah. Been there a while.
Yeah.
So I can like. How does it say ten or twelve?
That's what I said. Whenever they build some.
Over ten years. Probably fourteen fifteen.
Right.
And it was the new, uh, do you think the new owners would have been aware of that too?
I don't know.
I would hope they would have done their due diligence, but.
Yeah, they should have had a time transfer.
Be interesting to see what happened there. And Chris would have done it.
You should have done it.
No. They hired a third party contractor to do it. If it just sold. Yeah, I guess we just gotta.
Should have come through it.
But I guess that that's where I'm at. I will, you know, just try and clean this up, but it's getting all more and more bad. I thought they were a little further in the rest of it.
It needs to be done.
It does. And the new ownership now is the time that protein involved.
Well, everything needs to be, yeah.
Yeah. But we know who the new. I'm doing.
I can figure it out. I can what you know.
You figure it out. To just involve. Start that comment very decently later.
Remember they're putting some money into it, so. Depending from the. What's more than.
Everybody, everything even out of there and.
Yep.
For them to. Put money into it's gotta be. Probably for them to get it in, probably about what their annual maintenance fees are on the thing anyways. So I'm sure they got. They discharged. They've got out of a, they probably have an P D F permit, no?
They have a permit. They've got, I mean.
I'm being.
They have to have a service contract. My law for the type of system they have, and I don't know what they're paying for their service contract. That's one of those fabric media secondary treatments that comes and I don't know what the wife's been on over by twenty years and all.
In the end of.
In the way.
After we do their secondary treatment. And just put all new in. See, like Casey's a man. I think that's where they're at. They're actually gonna put a force rain in, so. Call the back family, but they're not. They're better deal stuff with system because.
Yeah.
Their type of business that's no good. Same off there. You know, if you got some sort of food service and there and that is not the ideal thing, but just they had to do it at the time, so. I think it'd probably be as good a time as any to get going on. If we need to draft up a letter, I guess, or whatever. We can do that. Send to them.
If the ownership of that probably gonna be the start of it.
Most had a comment here to eight years old.
Eight years.
You know. Holiday.
Be a year before we get, about time you got elected in.
I was thinking it was water.
Well, she should have, yeah.
Select.
Well. Yeah. Okay.
Maybe I'll hold my children night.
There you go.
Maybe I think construction too or something.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it could have been in your project, probably.
Or we.
I guess we have to draft a letter first.
Your motion. What motion we need to.
I don't know. Let's draft a letter normal. If we agree on it, are we good with? I mean, just. All the way ready like this.
Yeah.
Through us. I would think so. I didn't think it was gonna be this.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
We just. We haven't got a return on our contract for seventeen thousand, so.
Oh, yeah, I love that. I'll tell you that.
From people. So we.
But that's because they jack the maintenance rate.
Yeah.
So, and that's that was all for water. So it it doesn't still doesn't change the fact the wastewater is losing money.
Yeah.
And it went from in three years, it went from. So drastic, yep, the direction.
Well, when. I don't have the details on the claims that are included from what you provided, and that's why I had some questions. Because three times is this. One time what happened? Because. We'll need to forecast a little bit when we go and to adjust some of those grades.
Could you put some notes on that that I can grab the claims that you made either?
I was just gonna sit down.
Okay. Okay.
Their job. They should have it all. That's my.
They do that well.
You know. I would, I would say we approve V N K to. Hurt. Our rate for getting this finished up.
Or we'll circle it up. I have a motion in a second. Is any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I opposed motion carries. So. Anything else for us?
For me.
And you'll work with Jackie getting that information back. All righty. Wouldn't work that call Melissa.
I just met with hotels and the welcome center last week, so. I might have gotten my numbers confused, but. Anyways, uh, we met. With the welcome center, the Scott at the casino and both hotels and we ran over some ideas of what um. Uh, how to be proactive on how to market the the interchange and involving everybody at the same table. It was interesting and I got a lot of information that I didn't even, I was not even aware of. So, and then um. Uh, I followed up some discussion with Myrtle and Alex from E D A about some federal funding. Um. There's a lot of hoops to to jump through for that, so uh, it is just initial discussions at this time.
And that's on that. Infrastructure. High point, right?
Yep. It is, it it seems very unlikely that the federal government will fund a any infrastructure going to a privately owned industrial park.
We need to buy an acre then?
Well, and there is other, there's other things you need to have. Um. We need to have letters from other. Uh, entities that intend to hook up to it.
Sure. Okay.
And that's just multi, that's just two of a lot of different puzzle pieces, so.
Yeah. Okay, see if it'll work out or not.
Anything else you guys got for Melissa? Thank you, Melissa. Uh, EMS continued discussion.
All right.
Yeah, well, I think you had a meeting, didn't you?
Yeah, I did. Uh, we messed down in Manly. It's Thursday night. Um. We. And most everybody there, we're going to look at. Um. I'm talking with state attorney general's office on if we can. Coordinate since the cities are within the, the entire EMS district, we're looking at establishing down there. If we can put it all together as kind of one thing, does city has code, county has code, but it reads almost identical. Other than. City limit lines versus township or, or uh, county line. So. We're talking with them, see what we can do, if we can coordinate that together and then uh, and I'll just start making the steps on that process. Um, we're very much with choice, so. We cannot come up with a funding, they're just the townships levies, so. We'll have to go in and, and actually tax it. Um, and that would be taxed at all dwellings within the borderlines of uh Union Lincoln and a part of Danville. So, as long, as well as the thirty's of draft and then, and Manly, so. So, we're to start that process and. I'm gonna get that going, so we can hopefully. Um, sure, it'll be a special election probably after the first year, but that's the only choice we have, just, just timing is. It's so tight, once you get the process started to nail it onto a general election, it's pretty tough because. Of the timing, so. But. That's our intentions anyways, down for that area. Got you. Yeah, Ted got back and there should be two, and you said the dwellings, cause that was one of the questions down there that night was. Considering that anything that's classified ag is not included, over twenty five percent that you need, it's also not that. So, he did get back to the fact, so. Yeah, also, it's basically all the dwellings, the other zones. Every home within the towns, every, it's a property in the town. Um, outside of ag or centrally it's us.
So. Well, then be, depending on your town, timing, you wouldn't be able to get it on the fiscal year twenty five budget either, so. Why would you wanna spend the money on a spectacle?
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not feed.
The longer we put it all aside, orders can build, we're not gonna be able to fund it again another year or anything.
Yeah.
But um.
It's something to think about.
Yeah, true. Like I said, I don't, if we. Yeah. We can't get, get it done that bad, little thing. Just because you have to, you do. Petition, petition will go to cities, petition will come here. Then you do public hearing at thirty days and then you make the election like sixty days after that. That's kind of a.
Hmm.
That's a.
I think.
Yeah, I said, you gotta have that timing which is right, you know, if you even kept it on like a general election, so no matter what, it's almost gonna be a spectacle. Unless we can.
But then you could plan for the point four.
Right.
If you backed into it and then you'd be ready for budgets for the next, I mean, that doesn't solve any things for twenty five.
Right.
You'll take care of things today.
Mm-hmm. Are you thinking about getting bonded then for the election, so that if it fails? Who's paying for the election? That's something we discussed, um, that's what we gotta get figured out too, is where that money is coming from. There's gonna be some costs incorporated with this, whether passes or fail. Oh, so that's what we, another item we've got to get figured out is, is where that money is from, so.
And if it was on the general, you'd have to be paying for it then.
Yep.
Instead of having an extra cost.
Right, yeah, right.
Just, just a thought.
Mm-hmm. So a lot to see, we'll see what the. See if you come up with the rest of the info and then we'll start working from there, I'm just, it depends when we submit, get petitions on and get them submitted, so. It's gonna be a long process. Yeah, I mean, it could get done fairly quick, we get people to do it, but it's just, yeah, it's. Just a step by step, we gotta, we gotta engineer. Uh, several engineers draw lines. Which is gonna be pretty easy because it's two full townships and then the lines are already established. But they, then we have to take every single parcel of inside those lines. And that's the people who go after petitions, it's a landowner, not the land, uh, not the tenants, so you know, if there's rental properties. You know, those people can still vote, but they can't sign off on the land because they don't own the land and. Um, so there's still a few things they have to go through, they're saying it's gonna be expensive of an engineer to do it. And some other thing before we even get started. Um, that's what we're trying to get figured out.
And attorney.
Of course, an attorney, so. And then you gotta hope that down the road, maybe the city doesn't decide to not go outside of sewer roads.
How much limits there any left in your fire levy, Clark? I mean. That's a good part, partially, I mean, cause we need to move ahead on that, nothing else.
Yeah.
My, they need to move ahead on that regardless.
You got a little room and, and Danville's got a little room. Um, like max out.
Yeah.
Which, um, if I get, did that, it would just affect Manly's. Fire budget a little bit, but we could, if, if those guys adjust their levies this fall, then we could use those dollars to.
Something's better than nothing that gets started. Because we're always in the rear, I'm, no matter what you do, you're still on the rear before you.
Well, Lincoln, well, Lincoln have to give less to the fire departments.
Uh.
The only thing that's left.
May have to, um, and it's just Manly that they give to.
On reason.
No.
They give the Kenza a little bit?
Yeah, they would have.
There's two or three of them.
Depends on your line, I'd say.
You send it out.
Minimal, probably.
Yeah. I think we get the bulk of it, but.
I would think so.
Yeah, we just do. You put it might get a little bit, actually.
Be just that.
I think. There you go. I think, yeah, Southside Kansas, and that's where I like to stop.
As much.
Where's that before I start? But anyway, yeah, that's, that's what we're working on, it's gonna be a bit of a process, but. Kind of sneak rich into it, but it's gotta be. Like a third party, can't be anybody associated with anything, so. Yeah.
Family. But Manly got twenty three, twenty four, twenty three, eight ninety five this last going.
Yeah. So, yeah, anyways, it's, it's gonna be a process, but yeah, we'll have to, we'll begin here, hoping in a few weeks and. Decide more, work them up with the little bit of funding we do need and, and the township, just leaves, which may have to adjust their budgets already, just. Grow them up some money and then they could change them in the future.
Right.
Or, or we could tax less on the, on the EMS side, but.
They're gonna have to do it for next year regardless, I think, wherever they can, whether, you know.
Yeah.
Lives sad as long as we're trying, you know, they know it's gonna be a process, this doesn't happen.
Right. Yeah. Yes.
And we can only do, if we do something here, we can only do it for a fourth time, do it in town.
Well, it's something we gotta decide too, because it's, here we're already month in the third quarter and we're if they bill probably mid October from Maiden City. Um, for whatever calls they've come to.
We just made their fight enough to a month, I think is what we're gonna have to.
And same, same as for, so maybe they're not gonna get the tax dollars in the actual year.
More of it. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we, we've talked and we've kinda, but, but part, we were kinda sitting waiting on what you guys, your first meeting would, you know, happen there. You know, so at least we know what's gonna happen.
It'll be, it'll be interesting to know what they felt.
Right. Well. At least it's built for fall, so it's very quiet here and then. It's not last Monday, but. Have they looked at how many calls went into that area for the month of July? Um, we can find that out, yeah. I know we can find out, I don't know if anybody already looked at that. Okay, anything else you have, of course, about it on that, alright. Um. Department had discussions. You had a great weekend and.
Awesome.
Anybody out there that? On department? Buddy, okay, see, we'll go on the supervisors weekly report. What did you have, AJ?
No, just asking you a question.
Thursday night and. What was it?
Mark. I just said, public health, and. I just want to worry general stuff and then. Also discuss Dr. Seemup, she'd basically be non-mening September. Um, but we're kinda. Good discussion, I came up with more names than we thought that are in the county, and the biggest thing is, you know, some of the retired ones aren't gonna keep their license up either, you know, that's, that's a big issue, so. But there's gonna be a couple of board members that'll be talking with um. Some of the people here in town and see if they can get them interested, uh, Danny Bart, local doctor, Dr. Ross over Mitchell County, he could possibly do it. You know, kind of be our part-time guy until we get somebody if we need to fill in. So there's always that possibility, we can work with another public health office until we get a. Do a full time, so, um, but definitely make, you know, we had a pretty good discussion on names and there's actually more around here and. Going to step up and do that on, you know, would really be helpful, so. Um, that's all I had.
Okay. Um, I didn't have anything, so. Other trouble sheet, everybody said general ones. Um, next week's agenda. Um. Patty Irons sent three of us an email.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's on just a walkthrough with district court and that kind of stuff and unless you guys.
Are you?
Problem with it, I'm available.
Then enjoy it.
You okay with me doing that?
That's why I care enough to hear that.
What's that?
Mark, paper scissors? Yeah, necessarily I could do a day, well.
So we'll just plan on me doing that for now.
Okay.
Alrighty.
Love you, smoke, don't worry.
And then the other thing that I seen, we got an email on, was this Jasper's Family Foundation Fund coming up August twenty eighth. I'm aware of it.
More than one of you wanna be at it?
That's that community.
Grant.
The grant. It's kind of a little based on, you know, what they'll let you use the grant for and this kind of stuff, and uh, I thought I would go through it.
That's fine.
When is it? It's August twenty eighth at the Northwood Library here at ten thirty to twelve thirty.
Yeah, I know, we have, I have a. A meeting that day, I think, so.
Well, I got out a year ago about it, cause I got a classmate that's on the committee, so I thought I'd go in. But. I'm available that too. What's time on that?
Yeah.
I make that. I wanna know what's available and where we can use it. He meant to be the mall, about a year ago. I don't know if we do it any since, I read.
Other enemies I have around them used it. You're actually with the project.
But yeah, that's August twenty eighth and ten thirty, twelve thirty for our worries. That's the only thing I wanted to bring up with those two items. Anybody else got anything on the agenda they need to put on there? If not. I will take a motion to adjourn. I'm a second, I have a motion and second to adjourn, all of them, they were saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oh. Period, again, is adjourned.